All right, welcome everyone to the April 25th, 2022 School Board Meeting of Hadley School Committee. Do you have a motion to call this meeting to order?
Motion to call the meeting to order.
Thank you, Heather.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks. Annie, any adjustments to the agenda?
Yes, so I would like us to begin with item 4B, the Facilities Audit Presentation. And we have someone here to present for us this evening, and then after that, we'll move to the legal opinion in the after-school revolving account.
Great, and we'll proceed then with public comment first, and then move into the presentation items. Excellent, so I'd like to invite any members of the public to comment. As a reminder, you have three minutes to make your comments. Ideally, things that are on the agenda, we have no requirement to speak directly to any of the topics, but we'll be mindful of whatever you present. That's my paraphrasing of the policy around open comment. If you would like to make a public comment, please raise your digital hand, and I will take you off of audio mute, and we can hear from you. Okay, seeing none, we will move right into the presentation discussion items. And so the first item here is the Facilities Audit Presentation, and we are delighted to have Chip Phillips of Collier here to join us.
Good evening. Thank you. I don't know if they're more by way of introduction, or you want me to just jump right into it?
Annie, what would you suggest?
Well, everyone has a link, the school committee and the public have a link to the presentation that you're doing. You can feel free to share anything that you think is pertinent, even any background of what, or maybe that's part of it. I know you came back, so we'll just leave it to you.
All right, well, is there a if I share the presentation then?
Yeah, yeah, of course, please do.
Actually, before I hit share, let me put it into presentation mode. And then I will share. All right, so certainly feel free to ask questions along the way. You know, don't, don't feel like you have to hold till the end, we can, you know, get through it's. The presentation itself is relatively brief, just to, you know, give some, you know, information and then, you know, look to see what, what is interesting to people, you know, to talk into more depth about. First, let me, you know, my name is Chip Phillips, I'm a senior project manager with Colliers. I've been with Colliers since the year 2000, focusing almost exclusively on conditions assessments such as this. They, you know, working on them with a lot of public school systems, as well as private schools, colleges, universities. And so this is really, you know, what my main focus is here at Collier, so it was, it was good to spend the time at Hopkins Academy, getting to know another school in another district. First thing what you want to talk about is, you know, mention that we are, I did, we did focus on existing conditions. So it was looking at deferred maintenance kinds of items, things that need to be repaired, things that have, are upcoming, that are going to need to be repaired, so that you can start to plan for those. It was not a focus on major programmatic changes to the building, it was not, not on, you know, changes in the educational models or anything like that. It was strictly focusing on repair needs, both current and future of the building. We did go through in February with our team, architects, engineers, myself, looking at all the major, all the building spaces. Looked at all the major building components, the exterior shell, we looked at the roof and the windows and doors and the bricks on the outside. We looked at the interior finishes, the ceilings, the flooring, doors, casework. We looked at the HVAC system, heating, ventilating, and air conditioning, all the electrical plumbing, and looked for, you know, code issues that, you know, may be apparent to us or that might be triggered by work that's done in the building down the road. So we want to make sure that we're, you know, recognizing that exposure in the future as well. We did identify more than 110 project, individual projects in this process. Each project was, was, you know, had its own estimated cost, as well as a priority to make sure that we were, you know, understanding the urgency of the need. Just to, you know, go through some kind of high level, what some of our initial observations were that, first of all, you know, the school is in good condition, you know, it's clean, it's well maintained, it's clear that it's being cared for. We didn't see a lot of, you know, obvious, you know, problems with the way the buildings are being maintained. That's important to start out with, because we always find things, you know, deferred maintenance is a financial issue. And it's, you know, nobody has enough money to do everything when it needs to be done. So you do have to pick and choose and make decisions, and it's clear that that's, that decisions are being, are being made and that maintenance is happening. So that's, that's important to know. On the exterior shell, you know, the, the roof over the cafeteria is still an old roof compared to the rest of the roofs. There were some minor, you know, repairs identified on the exterior envelope for the pointing of the brick, painting of trim, replacing the main entrance doors and assembly, as an example. Interior finishes, again, clean, but they're starting to get tired, we're seeing sagging ceiling tiles, flooring is starting to crack. And so the vinyl flooring is due, the casework in the classrooms is, you know, is, is starting to deteriorate. Wood doors in the interior are ready for replacement and painting, you know, the building is ready for, for painting. The biggest issue altogether really is the heating system, it's an old steam system with pneumatic controls, which are the kind of the air controls. You know, it's, it doesn't meet current standards for environmental control, for, for, you know, comfort, for comfortable spaces, for efficiency. All of those things are reasons why, you know, it's time to start planning for its replacement. Additionally, particularly as has been highlighted over the last couple of years, there is much more concern about mechanical ventilation in buildings. And so there's improvements there as well. On the electrical side, you know, things are in, are actually in fairly good shape. Lighting controls would go a long way to helping to reduce energy costs and provide the ability for daylight harvesting and kind of central control of areas. As well as the other electrical issue is that, you know, no school really has enough circuits in its classrooms, because none of these schools were designed for the technology of today. So you see a lot of extension cords and overloaded circuits and things like that. So starting to add circuits and outlets in spaces is recommended. Paving, the parking lots and drives are cracked and becoming due for, for repaving. And then as far as code issues, you know, one of the bigger ones, so it's not an immediate requirement, is sprinkling the building. We always recommend that school buildings are sprinkled, sprinkling is not to, generally is not to protect the building itself, but to protect the occupants. So while it's not currently required to sprinkle the building, any, any major work you do, you should be considering that as well. And from an ADA standpoint, many of the doors into the classrooms are recessed, which means you don't get the required 18 inches on the pull side of the door, so that those rooms are not considered conforming to ADA. So, you know, that's one of the examples of some of the ADA, Americans with Disability Act projects that we identified. Any questions? All right. The total cost of everything that we saw is about $9.4 million. Again, not every project is equal in terms of urgency, so we break them into three priorities. That priority one is kind of those most urgent needs, those are items that are failing or impacting program, or, you know, just, just, you know, really give a bad feel for the building. That was, you know, relatively low percentage of $2.6 million. The, those are the items that we really, you know, feel should be done within the next three years. Priority two are items that should be done within the next five years, that kind of that four and five year range, that is the biggest area. So, you know, give some time to start planning for that, that's another $5 million. And then $1.8 million of party three, which are items beyond five years, that, you know, some of them are grandfather codes, some of them are cycle maintenance projects that will be coming due. One of the big ones there is the, you know, the, all the major roof systems, we're recognizing, you know, these done within the next 10 years, but that's a party three. This is a technical study, so we want to look at the, how the needs were identified across each, each of the major building components. So this graph shows, you know, got across the building systems based on priority where those needs are. So you can see that right away, the HVAC is that highest level of need, as I mentioned. However, you know, the majority of it is party two, you, the, the district has done a good job of maintaining the heating system and keeping it operating and replacing components as necessary. But, you know, it's now reaching the point where, you know, in the next five years, really should consider a full HVAC system upgrade.
Chip, can I ask, can I ask a question about the HVAC, just because I, I'm looking at this and just trying to better understand it? You have HVAC broken into all three priorities, and I'm sure there's a really good explanation for that. Can I, can I just better understand why you wouldn't just be like, all of it in priority one, or all of it in priority two?
Because we really, we try, you know, particularly on the, when we're doing the assessment, we try to not consider implementation. We're really looking at current conditions, so there may be certain components of it that are higher need than others. Once you start putting together an implementation plan, then, you know, you would do that all at once. And, you know, you would, you know, if there's any Band-Aids that need to be done to, to extend some of the priority one issue needs to a party two, you can do that. Or, you know, go ahead and, you know, take care of the whole thing in the next three years. But we're, we're really trying to stay away from prior, from implementation planning at this point, that really comes next, once you decide what you're going to do. All right, thank you. If, if that helps, so, you know, for instance, you, the steam unit ventilators in the classrooms, libraries, cafeteria are priority one. The DDC, the upgrading the pneumatics to DDC is a priority one. Some of those things you can start to do, you can start to upgrade the controls, for instance, now, and then reuse them. And so that would help, you know, you, you, it would help continue the, to improve the system over the time until the full project is implemented. And most of that will, can be reused, but then, you know, you can continue to repair the unit ventilators that are steam, you know, in order to get them to that party two.
No, that's great, and just, just to help me, and I know we're not at the implementation phase, but like, is it more efficient to just do it all at once?
Yes, it certainly is, but it's a, it's a big nut.
Yeah, it's, yeah, okay, thank you.
Yep. Yep. On the interior shell, you know, there is more priority one need, a lot of that is the finishes, the doors, the casework in the, in the classrooms. You know, not, not as much, you know, money has gone into upgrading those, those areas. And so starting to see there a little bit more urgency, and really can have a big impact on the, the way the school feels and looks by, by starting to address those. On the exterior shell, as I mentioned, the overall roof is that big priority. The area, that's really the bulk of all the priority three need. Statutory, the big party two is the sprinklers, and, you know, all the others are relatively small compared to, you know, particularly those first three.
Chip, I have a question about HVAC systems in general, and I don't know if, you know, a question can be asked like this in terms of generalization. But like, when you get a new roof, it lasts, you know, a certain number of years, you know, you're gonna have to replace your roof every, I don't know what it is, is it 10 years?
No, it's, it should be 20 years at least, depending on the type of roof that you put in, but generally you should get at least 20 years.
So what is, is there a rule of thumb when it comes to HVAC systems, and what can we expect?
You would be looking at 20 to 25 years today in modern systems, depending, you know, on most of the components, you know, some of the old boilers will last much longer than that. They don't make them like that anymore. So, you know, generally, you can, you know, you can assume 20 to 25 years before you have to do any significant replacement. There's always going to be ongoing, you know, annual maintenance in order to keep the system efficient, but, but that's kind of the, the range you'd be thinking about.
Great, thank you.
So it would be, you know, it would be taking care of the system other than the annual preventive maintenance needs, you know, for the next 20 years.
Great, thanks.
And, you know, there's a lot of different options on the kind of system that goes in, you know, we're not, we're not designing it at this point, that's again, part of implementation. But, you know, I would investigate, you know, natural gas condensing boilers. I know right now, there's no gas to the area, and that would have to be part of that analysis, is what is it going to take to get gas there? Ground source heat pumps is another system that's really growing in popularity and has significant savings on the, on the annual cost of, of energy, though it is a little bit more expensive to install and set up.
That's
But, you know, so all of those
Geothermal?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Great.
So those are the kinds of things that, you know, the engineering company, once you start to implement, should go through and go through all of those options with you, with costs, in order to make sure that you're picking the best solution for the school.
I wanted to get a sense for, you know, 20 to 25 years, you know, if you did get a whole new heating system, but you had to replace a building because it is, it is kind of an older building. And so I, you know,
Yeah, I mean, the reality, the reality is, I mean, well, as we look at the building, it's in, you know, there's, there's nothing wrong with the bones. Okay, that structurally, it is, is in good shape. You know, the, the other piece of the decision to replace a building is, you know, looking at it from a programmatic standpoint. How well does the building layout support your current educational programs? What's happening with your enrollment, is it going up, is it going down, do you have enough space, do you not have enough space? All of those are, you know, important inputs into a decision to replace a building. Strictly from condition, you know, alone, I don't see that as a, as a, you know, need over the next 20 years.
Great, thank you.
This is really encouraging, I just wanted to say that.
Oh, good. I mean, I, I mean, nine million, nine and a half million dollars is a lot of money, but it, but, you know, it isn't all now, and it is a amount that can be managed. You know, the, the other thing about, you know, implementing the project without having to do full renovations or full, or new construction is it could be a lot less disruptive. You know, this is the kind of thing you can, you can knock off over, you know, summer, summer projects. You know, and if you, and stage it appropriately, so that, you know, you're not disrupting the education very much in students.
Chip, can I ask you a question about geothermal?
Yep.
Is that something, if we made a decision to try, you know, go down that route, would that affect priority one, two, and three, or?
Yes.
Of the priorities, okay, so we could address the whole HVAC in one fell swoop?
Yes. Yeah, I think, you know, while there are some small projects here and there for repairs to keep things going, the bulk of it would be addressed with the, with the HVAC upgrades, whether it's geothermal or something else.
A quick question, and tell me if this is not, you know, your area of expertise, but, you know, as homeowners, often we hear about things like tax incentives to, you know, get the more energy efficient appliances, to upgrade your pellet stove, things like that. Are there similar types of financial incentives out there?
It's very, it's very different, because most of those incentives are funded through tax breaks, and you don't have taxes. So, you know, so it's harder to do that, what some public entities will do is basically lease the equipment. So there, there are companies that will come in and replace your, you know, install the geothermal and pay for it, they get the tax break, and then they have a, basically a leasing arrangement where you pay back over time, you know, to, to cover the, the capital costs from the installation itself. You don't, you don't see as much immediate savings that way, because you're paying, you know, over time out of your operating budget versus if you, you know, if you pay for it through capital, then you can, you know, your operating budget will go down. So those are all, those are all part of that whole decision-making process, once you decide to move forward.
Great, thanks.
Yep.
I'd like to ask a question, Chip, I don't actually know if this is for you, or if this is for another conversation, but given that we're going to be putting a new roof potentially on, on the cafeteria, and is it new roofs across the whole school, or just the cafeteria?
The immediate need is the cafeteria, the rest of the school is really in that five to 10 year range.
Okay, is, is there, do you guys do any work around like solar panels, or is that more of a town conversation? Because I just feel like if we're putting a new roof on, it might be an opportunity for us to, to go down that road of putting solar on a roof that we know is going to be good for 20 years.
Absolutely, and, you know, you, you like, sometimes you can get the solar company to include the cost of the new roof in their analysis, so that they actually put the roof on as part of that whole process. Again, you don't, you don't see the immediate payback needs, but not only do you get the PV arrays, the photovoltaic arrays, but you also get the new roof. I would not be looking at a solar system on the main roof right now until you're replacing that, because you want to kind of line those up. You don't want to put the solar system on now that will have a 20-year life, and then the roof that'll have, on a roof that only has five years, for instance. So you wouldn't want to kind of stage that together. You know, the cafeteria area is not a huge area, certainly that analysis could be done as to whether it makes sense to do that at that, at that point, just in the one area.
Okay, thank you.
I wonder if the geothermal footprint on the, on the land adjacent to the building would be a place where those roof panels could be situated?
Certainly something that, that you can do, I mean, you know, we, I just did a project with geothermal, and all the wells are under the parking lot. You know, so that's another thing, if the parking lot is really due for repaving, you could do it that way. Again, that, you need to do, you know, a lot of geo, of geotechnical, you know, investigation to make sure that you have the right water table and temperature and depth and all of that. But, you know, there, there's certainly plenty of places on that site that you could put those wells.
We could potentially have, so UMass is installing solar in all of its parking lots. So you could potentially get a three, four.
Yeah, the high school, yeah, the high school in our town just put in canopies with solar on them, in the, in the student parking lot. So it's, you know, it's big, they're tall enough, the buses can go right under them, and it provides the, the solar array, you know, right over the parking lot.
That's, that's pretty interesting and compelling, if you had geothermal, new parking lot and canopies, solar canopies, because no matter what you did to the building, you wouldn't have to, you know, you wouldn't be disturbing the new investment you made in the
Right. Yeah, that's very true. And, you know, as a, as an example, I just worked on a project, it was, you know, a library with geothermal and solar, and we doubled the size of the library, and the energy costs are 60% of what they were before construction. So not only did we double size, but we're now still, you know, saving 40% on what they had experienced over time in, in the past. So it's, you know, it's, it, the, the numbers can be pretty impressive, as long as the, as long as the, the geography and geotechnical analysis shows that that'll work.
And is your firm the kind of firm that we could utilize, or would we need to go with an engineering firm that specializes in, in that?
That's something that we can help with, we actually just kind of combined with a, an engineering firm, and I, I don't know specifically how much of that they do, but very frequently it helps to have a, you know, owner's representative to help guide the, the decisions and process, and make sure you're getting the right companies in to, to do that, and, you know, really look at the whole, manage the whole process, because it can be very involved. And that is something we definitely do.
One other question, are, so state funds towards this for schools, and I guess it's MSBA?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I do not know the answer to that.
Okay.
I have not, I, you know, I'm, you know, the MSBA projects I've been involved with have not been specifically for these kinds of energy projects, so I do not know the answer. I can find out, but I don't know
I might be able to answer for you, so the core, a core project would be essentially building a new envelope. When you're looking at things, there's two kinds of things, core and accelerated repair. We have twice, we have twice submitted applications under accelerated repair. Having the assistance of Colliers to kind of provide us with additional documentation from experts about why these things were a priority. The things that fall under the accelerated repair are HVAC and roofs. And, and windows, yeah, I think windows, roofs, and an HVAC. So that, and then the MSBA funding, as you know, is determined by the wealth of the community, it's different for every single community. And I think, the last time I checked, anything is, is great, any support we can get is great. I think it was more like 50 cents on the dollar in, in Hadley, I think it was around 50 cents on the dollar the last time we were looking.
Yes, some states have additional, you know, outside of the, I knew the accelerated repair was strictly for those kinds of items. Some states do have additional funding for security issues, for energy savings, and those kinds of things. I just, you know, I'm not an expert on that side of the MSBA, so I didn't want to, you know, say yes or no to it.
Great, this has been very helpful, are there any other questions for Chip?
That's really, that's really, uh, there we go, we already, we already hit it all, but that is the, the, you know, the end of the presentation. Again, it was really just to let you know what we found, and, and so that the discussion can start about the next steps and how you want to move forward, so.
Great, we really appreciate this insight, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chip.
All right.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the legal opinion of the school revolving account.
Yes, let me make sure that I am off mute, I am. Hadley Kids, you will notice this tonight when Chris does the financials and reviews the revolving accounts. The Hadley Kids account, and again, I'll let Chris speak to more of the details when he actually gets to his presentation on revolving accounts. But because it takes a little while, the town doesn't immediately on July 1, carry forward all the balances of the previous year. Chris just knows where we ended on June 30, and he carries that forward, and he's doing all the expenses and revenues based on that figure that we had of June 30 in the prior fiscal year. Last year, right, it was at Annual Town Meeting, I believe, but last year, there was an article in the warrant that returned revenues in what they thought was a park and rec account to the town's general fund. It was actually an account that you folks had established under Chapter 71, Section 26, it was when you established a revolving account for the after-school program. It's a very specific kind of account under Mass General Law, called an after-school, out-of-school time account. Again, the law that governs it is 71, Chapter 71, Section 26. You folks voted to establish that account, it does not require a vote on the town side. The school committee establishes a revolving account, the school committee has sole authority over that account. Think school choice, even though Chris and I often refer to the budget and show you where, how much school choice we plan to apply, or where we plan to apply it. When we actually go to apply that money, you folks vote on that. Or if there's an additional expense that we want to use school choice money for, we bring that specific request to the school committee. So you have sole authority over how that account is administered, and the same is true of the Chapter 71, 26 account. And the same is true of the chapter 71, 26 account. When they were cleaning up. Revenues and accounts on the town side, they thought that it was a park and rec account. They put an article on the warrant and actually listed it under park and rec, which is why really. None of us, there were no other school, there was no other school business on that warrant and uh, so it wasn't annual. It had to be special town meeting because it wasn't the budget. Um. Actually, Hamera, you had said you were even at that meeting. It was very small. It was during COVID. It was in the firehouse. Um. So we wouldn't have, even in the warrant, it would not have gotten our attention. It was listed under park and rec as the custodians for the account. What we realized last month was that the balance in the account, we had been showing you. 30,000 or something along those lines. And when Chris checked, they said, no, let's say it's more like 2,000. We said, what? Um, and so we, we figured out with the help of the folks on the town side what had happened. Um, as you can see, the legal opinion is that really the town should return that money to that revolving account. At first, uh, they were going to try to have that happen on this warrant at annual town meeting. I did speak with Carolyn today, the town administrator, and she's indicated that it would be much easier for the town to do that in the fall. There's a lot that goes into the warrant, as you all know, um, approves it, the select board approves it, the attorney has to review it. And it has to then be completely finished so many days before the actual meeting, I believe. They can't just keep changing it moments before. And so it was, it was a pretty tight timeline and they're still sorting out. Um, exactly what the warrant article would read, but they intend to take care of that in the fall. So I wanted you folks to have that information. It was a completely understandable, it's so easy to see how it happened. Park and Rec was assisting us with that program and. Um, so it's, it completely makes sense how it happened. We'll get it sorted in the fall. Um, but you will notice a big dip in the revolving accounts this month when you're looking at Hadley Kids and that's what it's attributed to.
Great, thank you, Annie. Yeah, I did go back and look at my copy of the warrant and it did say something like. Um, after school recreation or something of that nature and um. Uh, it was incredibly confusing. Um, you and I both knew, didn't. Didn't think that there was going to be anything related to schools on the warrant and uh. Sounds to me like there's a simple fix as well, which is to either establish a new account or transfer it to the existing reopened account.
Yes.
Great.
So there is a 71, 26, chapter 71, uh, section 26 account currently that we're using for Hadley Kids, so they'll work with. Um, the accountant on their side and they'll figure out the best way to, and then they'll, they'll have to put together a warrant article. For the fall town meeting warrant.
Okay, are there any questions about this?
I just have one question. Um, so the, the. The delay and the return of the money in their revolving account doesn't cause any hardships in any way, shape or form. For us, for the program running or the school district at all?
No, because what we would use that money for is um, there's a couple of things that, so we certainly. Uh, we're collecting revenues right now and are, we have enough revenue to meet expenses in that program. The kinds of things that we would use that for are, one, we currently don't have a low income assistant or assistance or scholarship. Any sort of low income assistance or scholarship program, which um. Several families have reached out to me to indicate that um, it's, it can be after school care can be an economic hardship, although. By comparison to other programs, it might be seen as affordable. Nonetheless, it would be nice to have um, those programs available and. A Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so a DESI run after school program. I do not believe that families have the same kind of access to vouchers that they would if it were an early education and care program. Um, so that's one way that we would want to use that money. I, I would suggest we use it is to come up. Um, with a system of uh, doing income assistance or financial assistance to families that qualify. And the other thing is because it's after school and out of school time. Um, that's also a place where we would use funding to do the kinds of summer programs we did last year. So the state funded those last year, but we're looking to fund our own. I still think that um, we will be in a position. To do that this summer and even if for some reason I thought that it was tight, right, we, we ended. And our revenues are such that, I, I don't foresee this happening, but even if it were tight, I could suggest to the school committee. That they fund summer programs using some school choice funding and then when we get the money back from the town, we then return it again. I mean, assuming that, that was even allowable. I talked to Chris about that, but those are the kinds of things that we would use excess revenues for.
I have one more question. Um, the legal advice that we received. Um, states that they could simply put the money back into the current revolving account. Or we can motion to create a new revolving account. Do you understand what the difference would be between those two revolving accounts?
Would it change? To create, yeah, I don't think you need to create. In, in other words, my understanding is if the town had closed. If the town had closed that account, they didn't close the 71, 26 account. It's still there. It's where the revenues are going this year. So if there was no account, if the town had closed that account. Although I'm not really sure how they do that without your approval, but if it didn't exist, you could vote again to establish an account. But there is an account sitting there, the, the type of account that you need established under this particular statute. And that's where the revenues are currently going. It was also confusing last year because of COVID, right? So it, it, there wasn't a tremendous amount of activity there. Except for issuing refunds, so I can easily see how, does this just. Not exist or is it completely park and rec? Fund, program funds that we're looking at here. But they never closed the account, just moved the money out. They just transferred the money to the general fund.
Great. Any other questions for Annie? Okay, um, do you need us to vote on anything or take any action here?
Uh, no.
Okay, great. Thank you. All right, moving on to teacher collaboration proposal. Um, Annie.
Yes, so this I think is very exciting. You'll see linked into your agenda, um, something that April Camusa, the principal at Hopkins, put together, which I very much appreciate. What she did, uh, as you are aware, teachers have expressed a concern over um, the number, there are just a number of meetings a week. And um, it makes it less likely that teachers are able to collaborate with one another after school. Cause it is highly likely that they could be in a meeting or working with students in extracurricular activities. Uh, April has done a considerable amount of research on the benefits of teacher collaboration that is purposeful and well organized. She lays this out in the proposal. She surveyed her faculty. Jen also surveyed her faculty as well. Asked teachers what kinds of, uh, would they be interested in additional collaboration time? And what kinds of things would they like to be working on during that time? What we then did was uh, look at a way that we might be able to provide structured collaboration time for teachers. And how we could do that without um. And still make sure that we met all the requirements for time on learning. What we are proposing is that for 10 days throughout the entire year, so roughly one day a month. That Hopkins Academy would have a one hour delay schedule. And the students then would ride the morning bus with students from Hadley Elementary School. This has another unintended benefit is it will allow us to test out a single tier of busing. As you recall, when we talked about a single tier of busing, some parents wondered what that would look like, having K through 12 students on the same bus. So this allows us to kind of test that out just a few times over the next school year. What you don't have in front of you right now is the corresponding collaboration schedule for Hadley Elementary because. The staff there, the faculty there are still talking about what would make the most sense. What we think, what we're thinking of at this point. Is our goal would be probably on the same day. It wouldn't have to be, but it seems to me like it would be easier for parents to remember and less confusing. That you would have a one hour delay for Hopkins students, staff come in at the same time. They use that morning time for collaboration. Students ride the bus all together. And then in the afternoon, you have a one hour early release for Hadley Elementary. Students ride the bus together again in the afternoon. And the elementary teachers have collaboration time. That would also in the afternoon, that early release. There could also be some collaboration among Hopkins Academy faculty and HES faculty. As Hopkins Academy students dismiss at that time regardless. This would, I had mentioned to you that you were approving the calendar next year in phases, so there is also in the agenda, I think. What the approval is, and I'm certainly willing to answer any questions about this. The approval is under 8D, the calendar with the delayed start. So you can see. The dates that are selected there. And again, once Hadley Elementary and some of the things that Hadley Elementary. Still look at when they're scheduling this. They're also in the, in the midst of looking at their entire schedule. Because um, they would want to make sure that they weren't. Unlike the, unlike the high school that has a rotating, rotating or waterfall schedule. So by having this hour delay, you're not going to hit the same class every single time. The elementary schedule right now is a fixed schedule. So that could mean that the same educators are losing either the same instructional block. Or the same specials block or um, their unassigned time that they use for planning. So there's just a little bit more that has to go into thinking about the dates that would make sense for Hadley Elementary School. Um, and then we would bring those back to you as well. What I wanted to do. Today was to answer any questions you might have about the proposal or um, and then just. If you are open to this concept and um. And then hopefully if you uh, during action items would be willing to approve. The delayed starts for Hopkins Academy for this purpose. Again, with the understanding that on those days, students would all ride the bus together. And that we would test out a single tier of busing as well.
Great, thank you, Annie. Um, I, for one, love the idea of putting the um, onus of organizing in the best possible way. In the hands of the students, uh, sorry, the teachers and ESPs um. To collaborate on their, um, as they see fit. Um, and I think this is um, this is. Um, smart. I do have a question about the, what you said about the staggered delay. That if, if it were on both days, wouldn't that mean that the students wouldn't be riding on the same bus? Because the um, Hadley Elementary students would be coming an hour later or how, how? Can you just?
No, so, yeah, so imagine, so by that having that hour delay essentially. They're now just riding the HES route. I think HES starts roughly an hour later. So that's why in the morning they're all on the bus together. And then in the afternoon, if the elementary left an hour early. They're riding the bus with Hopkins.
I see.
Yeah, it's just for the elementary. That's how you get them all together.
Got it. Okay, understood. Thank you. Other questions for Annie?
Um, I like this idea. I like, especially since in negotiations um, with unit A recently. You know, this, this, I, I like to see this report because it really seems to capture kind of what they're. I, what sounds like they were looking for, at least they're given input on what is the most important things to them, when it means the collaboration of that. So I, I, I think this is great. I like the idea of HA and HES being um. The same days for that coordination, um, because also if you've got kids, um, you know, one in each school. Parents don't have to think about all these, you know, then that's 20 days potentially. If you've got a kid in each school that you have to think about time changes. So I, I, I like the idea of them being on the same day if it can work out. It's just one less thing for parents to have to remember, really, right? Um, and then I guess I had two questions for it. Um, one would be in the elementary school, I'm guessing that we would be able to coordinate after school for kids for the early release. So that wouldn't be a concern for parents. So if somebody's doing after school, their kid could still just go to after school, it'd be an hour earlier. Um, and then I'm, you know, I, I don't know if you've thought about like. I'm guessing that wouldn't change what parents pay for rates on those 10 days per year either. That would be my only other question.
Yeah, I don't think that it would require us to because currently, as I said, our revenues. Over expenses in that program are such that I, I don't think that we would really need to for those 10 days, an hour for those 10 days to um. I don't know, to nickel and dime parents over that, I think it'd be necessary. And also, I really want to give credit to, I mean. April and Jen have done amazing work on this and really give all the credit to April who thought through this, even thought through. Um, not only to your point, Tara, how do we do this so parents have one less thing? Cause it is a lot to try to remember if you have kids in two schools, but also if you have children at Hopkins, they might be your daycare for your children at Hadley Elementary. They might be your babysitter. So having that, that, by doing that, it kind of helped that as well. You didn't create this like. That for some families, that's not the case, but it could help with childcare for other families.
Right. Uh, and then my only other question was days in learning and I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. You've got this little time on learning with 10 days of collaboration time. So it doesn't impact their number of days that they have to have an education by doing these 10 days adjustments.
Yeah, so what we're showing you there, so the first one above the two graphs is Hopkins Academy. So it tells you, um. We have our regular days, the hours, so 5.73 regular day. We have, we get 933.99 hours on the half days, we get 24 hours. And hour delay and so our total hours that we have, we just did the math to show that. We're at, April and I did it for Hopkins and then I did it for HES, that we met the 990 minimum. And at HES, the minimum is 900 hours.
Okay. Cool. I like this. I like all of it. I like the idea of it and I like the idea of kind of trying this out in little mini steps. We'll get feedback from parents and staff alike on what it might look like with a single bus tier. I think this is a great way to try to get our feet wet just to see. Might be less overwhelming for parents if they get a tiny little taste of it.
For parents and also if you recall, and again, every student group is different, but if you recall. Uh, Ethan, you weren't here, but the rest of the folks were when Jack Kelly reported on the students' feelings about a delayed start. And we were somewhat surprised that they were like, eh, not so much. We're not really into that, but if they get 10 days of sleeping in, they might say on second thought. I kind of like that. So the students also get to test this out. Parents get to test out the single tier and the teachers. Uh, April has been talking with her teachers and they are very excited about this, so that's nice too.
Can I just, I think we talked about this a while ago and maybe my mind is just blending everything together, but um. I know we had a little bit of a conversation around having kind of like leader, older leaders ride the bus. Is that something that we discussed and is that something that we might want to revisit? Am I remembering that or am I?
Yeah, I think we talked about, it could be pro merito volunteers who were um. Uh, appointed the responsibility of just, you know, overseeing or leading or um, watching over. Um, but yes, we, we talked about when we do something like this, we'd want to implement. Some norms and protocols just to make sure that things were going smoothly and that it was a smooth transition. Although it is a prototype, we should definitely still make sure that we're um. Assessing and implementing those um, protocols. So there is a team that we pull together to do the analysis. And, and maybe it's that team that our principals also work with to think about what some of those um, protocols are.
Yeah. I'm making myself a note right now. Or key club students, yeah. Okay.
I had one other um, piece of feedback and Tara, I agree. I, I think this really does resonate as coming out of our discussions with unit A. Um, I'm supportive of it. I think the one thing around the implementation, you know, I, I don't know. Um, whether teachers will feel like, for some, this might be new to them. Um, and while they may be excited about this, it would be good to, as this goes along, have some exemplars. Of the types of um, you know, things that they're going to address. So we talk about in here. Um, having them develop um, cross curricular goals, um, common unit planning. Um, agendas and notes for the minutes and then at the end, providing final products that are generated. You know, it might be good after um, in launching this to have some. Templates or a starting point for folks who may not have ever done this before, so.
in launching this to have some templates or a starting point for folks who may not have ever done this before. So it's less daunting. April may have those at the ready or Jen, but I could see where if I were new to this, I would be looking for those kind of, you know, supports is just some guidance.
That's a great suggestion.
It's a really good point. Great. Any other final thoughts for Annie? Okay. Annie, do you need a vote on this?
That would be great if you're, if you're really voting on the calendar, uh, which is under eight D. So that dates, it's the only thing now that's changed. And when the HES dates are in there, I'll just bring back that if it's early release on all the same days, HES may decide they don't need as many days. That's the kind of thing you're talking about right now. But you'll see the delayed starts are in there.
Great. We may as well make a motion and move it now. Do I hear a motion to approve this calendar?
So moved.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Seconded.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Great. Motion passes.
Well, there's Paul.
I've been lurking. Sorry about that. Just been lurking. I've been, I've been just seeing that concept. I, I support it.
Great. Awesome. Okay, great. So moving on to item D on the presentation and discussion items. We are going to discuss S R three funding for COVID related absences.
Yes. And I don't believe that this requires a vote because we talked about priorities with S R, but you didn't vote the actual grant application. So as you know, we, and we have over three years, three fiscal years to spend that money. We have earmarked a big priority was HVAC and the facilities. Also social and emotional learning and tiered supports. So we're funding Michelle's position with S R funding. But Chris and I wanted to, and we are actively looking into using S R funds to cover any expenses associated with did illness misses for employees since the state funding stopped effective March 16th. So what's happened, and again, we have a relatively small staff. We're not talking a tremendous amount of, of funding here. And also we are, you know, we're not talking a tremendous amount of funding. And we're also thankfully not talking about a lot of people that are still coming down with COVID. But for some of our staff, for especially some of our staff with young children who, or who had children this year or recently. So they are completely out of sick time. And for some of them, they didn't get sick with COVID or their kids didn't get sick with COVID until the day that the state stopped paying for sick time. And what that would mean for some of those staff is that at their last pay of the year, because we, we catch up with everything on the final pay, we make all the, all of those days will then go unpaid for those staff members. Right? So that state funding isn't there. And so we would like to, it is a COVID related expense. S R funding was meant to cover COVID related expenses. I'm not talking about doing this going forward, but for the remainder of this year, to use S R funding so that those staff members, what I just described to you, and you're not talking, you know, 50% of your staff, but it's a big hit for one or two people to experience if they were out on, for a COVID related reason and those days end up going unpaid.
I think this makes so much logical sense. It's not a lot of money and it's what the money was intended for. We are still in a global pandemic, even though things are opening back up. So the idea for to make sure that people don't go unpaid makes sense to me.
Yeah, I would agree. I think it's, um, you know, it's a gesture that I think would be appreciated. I'm, I'm assuming Annie that there's whatever definitions around that that would need to be put out there would be established, whether it's the, the educator themselves or their children or household member, what, you know, whatever is the cause, just that we would be specific. We have, you know, staff who care for their elderly parents at home as well. So, you know, just making sure that it's, it's not so limiting that it is only the staff person, but if they are
No, yeah. We would be looking Heather to actually just continue the same qualifications you had up until March 16th. And then at midnight on the 17th, it was like, too bad for you. So that's, we would just, we would essentially just then be funding from, I think it's March 17th until June 22nd, the last day of, um, yeah. Good. I'm supportive of it. Okay. All right. Then Chris and I will make the amendments that we need to meet with the state and we'll figure out with the town what that actually, what those transfers look like and in terms of funding. So that, thank you very much. I know the staff, I was, I was feeling really terrible thinking that especially this year is for many of our faculty, they've said in so many ways, this year has been more exhausting and more challenging than last year was. And so to get through and our, our faculty and staff have done, as you know, such an incredible job of showing up for students and for families and with enthusiasm. And I mean, all faculty and staff. This isn't just for teachers. It's for any employee of Hadley Public Schools. They've done such a good job and the thought of somebody as their parting gift, their last pay being just eviscerated because they got COVID just didn't feel right. So thank you for supporting that. Or because they're troubling or someone in your house did.
Thank you for bringing it to us. Okay, E, school choice slots kindergarten 2022, 2023. Annie?
Well, I'm glad that I put the word vote next to this. And now you will have to vote on this, although I don't think I gave you a vote at the bottom there. But if you recall, when you voted school choice slots, we didn't know about kindergarten yet. We'd like to, um, open up eight slots. We are certain we will fill those. Jen, the preschool and the K team had a magnificent event for pre KK and I guess everybody was happy and we got a lot of interest. So, but you didn't vote any K slots last time. So we'd like to open up eight slots, whatever I wrote in there for you. We'd like to open up eight slots in kindergarten. We believe that with those eight slots, assuming they're all full, which Jen does say that they'll all be full. Then we would have kindergarten classrooms at about 21 each. Um, and right now I think we have over 30 pre K. It's hard to know how many pre K classrooms you'll need because not every preschooler comes every day for the full day. If it looks like we need an additional classroom, I'll bring that back to the school committee and we would sort that out through school choice.
Well, I think this is terrific and 21 seems like it's manageable. And in light of the overall population decline, our intention was to have a strong early childhood preschool program that was a feeder and to have eight slots filled up. That is, it's doing exactly what we intended. So I'm, I'm in support of this.
Agreed. I think this is great.
Okay. You don't mind taking a formal vote on those school choice slots? That would be great because you hadn't voted kindergarten slots before.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve eight additional slots for the kindergarten?
So moved.
Okay.
Seconded.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right. Item F, Granby regionalization request.
Humira, I'm leaving that to you. Cause I didn't leave it. I told Ethan I couldn't get the voice to work. Thank you for sending out the recording, but I, it was Marcel, Marcel for me. I couldn't, so I, I don't, I didn't get to hear the discussion that you sent out to the rest of the committee. So I'll, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, great. So, um, just want to make sure Paul is back for this. He was bumped out and I'm making him co-host again. So he can join the discussion if he desires. Um, so we received a letter from the Granby School Committee and we shared that letter with you. I won't read the letter. But what I did do after speaking with Annie about this, uh, about the letter that we received was went back and listened to the school committee meeting that led up to the letter. And I tagged the start and end point and shared it with you all. And I hope that my school committee colleagues had a chance to listen and, and watch that. I thought it lent a lot of insight into the rationale for receiving this letter. We're one of several districts. I think it was five or six. I'm not sure exactly. It came in through our, um, uh, web auto form and it actually just got filtered. So I didn't see it until Annie, Annie shared it with me. And basically they, uh, the school committee itself, very committed to their, um, public schools, um, and, and a high school, middle school, high school program at the urging of the finance committee is evaluating whether there are districts in the area with, that might be interested in having a conversation about regionalization with Granby. And, um, my, um, sense from the board was that they, they may or may not be excited about that, but they're putting it out there to see what the appetite is for area schools. I personally had never considered to regionalize with a school that was, you know, it's like us, but it's not neighboring to us. So imagine, you know, transporting students that distance, but actually I understand now that it's not, it doesn't have to be about transporting students necessarily. We could just look at some shared services. And my conversation with Annie was kinds of services would that mean? It would mean, it would mean services that were suboptimum, I guess. If you, all of our people are optimized or optimum, but could we have a shared superintendent with both schools? Could we have a, a shared principal? Not saying that we could, but that is another approach short of, um, busing students. But as you can tell from the video and also well, from other information in, in the public realm about Granby, they've been asking for a new high school, middle school, high school for quite some time. That's a substantial investment that the town would need to make to support that. And they're, they're just feeling out other towns for that kind of collaborative approach to see if they can avoid getting a school altogether is my sense from what I saw. I'd love to open it up for thoughts and comments, interpretations. I am interested in, in other people's thoughts about, about the approach.
Yeah. When I read it, you know, um, I could sense the division here of what may be best for the schools from a, um, community standpoint within the schools as compared to what may be best for the town from a financial perspective. So I'm, I'm seeing that tug of war, right? But I also am seeing where regardless of what they hear from neighboring towns, they're still going to have this, have, consider having a consultant explore the viability. And that's, you know, I'm not sure whether you've already responded, Humira, but I, I think in the spirit of what you're describing, that there may be, um, services or efficiencies that we could gain from one another without necessarily considering it a regionalization. That, that's my initial take off of this. I also don't want to go down any kind of path where now we're sharing in a financial burden, um, to help support, you know, a new building where we just talked about the $9 million long-term plan of our own needs. And, you know, until we're at such a point where census data and numbers are truly threatening, you know, to the immediate viability. I don't know. My immediate sense is that this isn't something that would need to be done right away. Um, we, we just opened up eight new slots, right? To bring in additional kindergarten that we're not, I mean, unless we're hearing that, okay, writing's on the wall. In five years, we're not going to be able to fill seats and we're going to have some serious issues. We've talked about that as more of a longer term vision that hasn't yet come to fruition in the short term. So that's, that's my feeling right now. Um, I, I mean, I like helping folks out. So I like the idea of how might we be able to help leverage services and supports in an efficient manner?
I share your ending thoughts there Heather, when I read this, and I'm sorry, Humira, I just went through my emails and I totally, I, I saw Annie's email about adding it to the agenda, but I totally missed the YouTube video. So I'm going to watch that tonight just so that maybe I can fully grasp kind of the nature behind the discussion and kind of everybody's sense of it. But now I have a good idea just based on hearing what you had to say. Um, but my initial thought, at least when reading the email was that I'm not sure that Hadley is there yet, given, um, you know, again, how we've pushed for school choice, how we're thinking innovatively to expand what we have available at our school to make ourselves more attractive. And, and I, I agree. I don't, I don't know that at least it doesn't feel financially, um, that we're at that point yet where we need to consider regionalization in order to continue our school system, at least at this point. Um, and, and I guess I would need to understand more about shared resources and what that would look like. And Annie, I, I thought we did share a BCBA. We had a contract with them. I, I don't know if we still do, but we did a few years back. Um, and, and I mean, that I think, I, I think may have been beneficial for the school. So maybe there are other
We still have that contract.
We still have that contract. Yes. Okay. So I don't know if, you know, looking at that, I mean, I feel like, you know, I, I guess I would, I would want our, our district to explore maybe where it would benefit us to share something as well, right? Cause I can understand the nature of, of supporting surrounding school districts. I, I get that. But at the same time, where, you know, where would, where would we have that benefit at the Hadley Public Schools? Do we have a need to share services beyond the contracts that we've already done? Does it need, I, I, I'm not sure I'm on board with a regionalization at this point, given where we stand, but are there other contracts that might be financially helpful to us that would allow us to gain services as well? And have something similar to like the shared BCBA. I don't, I, I, I guess I'd want to understand more about it.
And, and to answer those questions, I would, I would need Annie to do the analysis to say, this is where we have excess time that we could, you know, have this half times, you know, resource go over and provide, you know, that resource. But I don't, yeah, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a partial, um, partial person here or there, but it's not very substantive. Ethan?
Yeah, I think I agree with what, what Heather and Tara have said. I, I again, don't want to be selfish about it and say like, what do we get out of it? But I think there is some sense of kind of what are the benefits for, for the Hadley Public Schools? Um, and then also, I, I mean, I, again, maybe I'm, I'm still relatively new to this, but it, it seems like um, we, you know, have some pretty exciting things happening here. And I think before we would want to go and regionalize and make big changes like that, it would be helpful to have us kind of see some of the things through that we, you know, at least have, have talked about doing. Obviously this, the plan that we just heard tonight is an exciting one and different programs that we've talked about adding and that we've added in the past couple of years. It seems like, you know, I'd rather see us, uh, walk down those paths before we, before we start really getting into regionalization, especially since it, it's not, again, on, on the surface, I don't know where the benefits come from.
Annie, a question for you. Um, do you have a sense of how many uh, students from Granby already choice into Hadley schools?
Uh, give me a quick second. I could probably find that out for you. Just, uh, but it's not one of our largest ones. I can tell you right off the top of my head. So the majority of choice students come from Holyoke, South Hadley. And I think still we get a big chunk from M M R S, but I can find that out for you relatively quickly. I just sent the information to the principals. I can do a quick email search and I can pull that up for you.
Hey, Humira, this is Paul. Just to be, to be clear, they're, they're not asking us to regionalize. They're asking us to talk about what it might entail. Is that right?
They're asking us if we have any appetite to discuss regionalization and what They're asking us if we have any appetite to discuss regionalization and what, you know, that could look like. We start taking all seventh through 12th grade Granby students to Hadley and they go to school at our building, that could look like. And this, this would never, in my mind, this would never pass muster by our town, or I don't think our committee has the appetite for this, or our school students would go to Granby. And those are on the extreme edges, obviously. But that's, that's what regionalization looks like when it happens in, in other places. Or it would look like some hybrid of that, but anything short of them having to invest in a new school. So I don't think you cut up just middle school or high school. Maybe if we said, oh, we actually have enough slots at the high school, let's take their high school students and they can cut a different deal with the middle school in South Hadley. I think our, South Hadley has already responded in the negative and stated that they don't want to regionalize, or they, or there were, let me, let me mistake. What, what the video said was that there was previous talks with South Hadley about regionalization. So perhaps this is a newer era and they might consider that. So it could be part, it could be all, it could be shared services. And that is, you know, chipping away at their challenge. But actually, I don't think that really solves their big challenge, which is they need a new building. So sending them a, like sharing a food service person is not going to solve that problem. So, but I think, I think there's too strong a support in Hadley for our schools, not only on this body, but also in the town, for having our own school system.
Yeah, I mean, but like you said, there's a huge spectrum. And it just seems like talk is cheap. I mean, it doesn't hurt us to have a conversation. I'm happy to have a conversation if there's shared services that we can, there's, it's a long road between that and us shipping our kids over there. So why not chat with them? We, I mean, we've talked about regionalization with other schools like Hatfields. So why not continue that conversation? There's no risk, there's no
And it sounds to me like the conversation would really be authorizing a consultant to analyze where those efficiencies would take place.
And, and I'll just, I mean, I guess ultimately, I mean, I, I will admit that I remember 1992 when they tried to do this before as a Granby native. I mean, ultimately, it would have to be voted by both towns, right? That's kind of what happened the last time was that Granby voted to do it and ultimately South Hadley voted not to do it. And so I feel, I just feel like we're a long ways away, but I, Paul, I'm with you on that. Like, if it's a conversation, I'm, I, I think it's, it's, it's worth the conversation. But, you know, like I mentioned, I feel like we've got a lot of irons in the fire right now for some, some things that I think are exciting and just in Hadley.
Sorry, Paul, go ahead.
I, I get it, that, but that's not the spectrum, the lens through which I'm looking at it. I mean, it's, we have increasing costs and decreasing enrollment. And so the cost per student is getting expensive. But there's ways that, you know, as a business, we need to find ways to, to be more efficient. So if there's ways we can find cost-cutting by sharing services with a larger district in some fashion, we have a responsibility, I think, to, to look at that. That's, it's a long ways away from saying we're going to move our kids to a different school. So, I agree, Ethan, that's not, that's not where we're going, but let's talk about, what, are there other efficiencies we can share with a, a similar business that does, that works in our neighborhood?
So one of the things that's relatively easy to do is if you folks, from what you're saying right now, if you were comfortable with it, I could reach out to Ethan and we could, there's usually these efficiency that executive office typically has grants available that would fund this, assuming that Granby was also interested, that would fund hiring consultant to do that kind of analysis. Where could you share services? Where are the opportunities? What are the benefits from said opportunities? And what are the potential costs or downfalls to those opportunities? The grants are usually small money grants, but you can get a consultant to do those kinds of regionalization studies for, I mean, these grants are usually like $10,000, somewhere between 10 and 20, and you pay a consultant to do that. That's certainly something I'm, I'm happy, either, Humira, you can probably, because the, the letter was addressed to the chair of the school committee, I mean, you can certainly let the chairperson know and I'm, I'm happy to also email the superintendent and help them work on putting together a grant like that.
That'd be interesting, you know, regardless of whether it's Granby or not, are there, just to know that, have a consultant tell us that, that we could share services with another district and find efficiencies? I'd be interested in that.
Usually, usually, Paul, those grants, they want to know the districts are looking at, so like in this, they would want Granby, because they, that's how they do the analysis, but if not.
The lessons might be, might be more global if it doesn't.
Oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
Okay, great. I will respond to the chair and include you, Annie, asking you to connect with their
That'd be perfect.
Superintendent, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, team. Oh, and Heather, I looked it up. So for the last two years, we don't have any children choicing out going to Granby. We have six Granby children choosing into Hadley Public Schools.
Thanks for looking that up.
Sure. Great. Okay, and item G, update spring open house for current and prospective families. This is looking incredibly fun, again, thanks to our extremely fun principals. I do not have fun written all over me, but they are wicked fun people. So Jen has been the food truck queen. So now she's advertising at Hadley Elementary, that batch ice cream will have a truck there. Hadley Elementary will also have a DJ, I believe, one of our PTO parents is offering that out in the parking lot and one of our students, I think, is going to be helping with that. And it looks like Chris is sorting out an arrangement with Mackin sliders. I think these are incredibly popular. Jen also did the legwork for us on that. That truck would be over at Hopkins Academy. The costs associated with that overall with the food trucks at most will be, I think, $575. I, I think it's worth the investment on what we're trying to do here. Jen did say to me today, although I'm sure her son would be mortified, but she said to me today, she said, oh, don't worry, we'll earn back all the sliders. My kids will eat like enough for us to earn back all the sliders, so no worries there. And then advertising, we will take out an advertisement in the Gazette. Just so you know, I just wanted to bring you up to speed on the expenses associated with us. I mean, it's not going to break the bank by any stretch of the imagination, but we'll include information about the festivities in the advertisement and underscore that this is for prospective and current families, so. Great, this is terrific. It's sounding like a lot of fun. And if you have short things that we can share, small advertisements that we can share on all social media, please do send them to the committee. We can also share it with. Oh, they have great flyers. Okay, I'll have the principals, because that's right, some of you aren't getting, like, you wouldn't get HES's flyer, that's right, Humira. So I'll, I'll ask the principals to forward their flyers.
Terrific.
Thanks. Okay. Business manager reports. Chris, are you there?
I am here, one second, there we go, okay. So I have three reports for you tonight. Let's see, let me just get to them. The first one would be the regular expense report that you always see. Again, I, I'm sounding pretty boring at this point in time, but really not a lot to report. If the accounts, you know, there are some accounts, obviously, that have gone over, but fortunately, we have some that are projected to run under, so that will offset any of the overages we may have. When I ran the, the numbers that we have to finish up the year and projected expenses to finish up the year, we finished in good shape. I ran that a couple of weeks ago, so really nothing of concern at all to show for the regular expenses. I don't know if anybody has any questions about any of the particular lines?
No.
Okay, I guess I can move on to the grants report then. So we have the grants report as of April 13th. There are some of the grants now that we have finished using up, so we've, we've completed one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of them. Many more will be completed by the time you receive the next report. And let's see, we have a couple of new ones that I included on the bottom, the social emotional learning, summer programming and early college support. That summer programming will be fully used, that, that's a reimbursement for summer expenses that we had, and we're going to use that to offset transportation costs. So that is actually going to free up extra money in the budget. It's going to take $11,000 that we already spent and move it over to a grant account. So as always, all of these grants will be fully spent, with the exception of the S R three and possibly part of the S R two that we can roll over. For, S R two for another year at least, and S R three for another two years. So plenty of time to use those up. And also the circuit breaker, obviously, we can carry over funds in that account as well. So we'll probably look to carry over the maximum amount. And that, that, you know, what that does is it, it provides us a little bit of a cushion just in case we get an unexpected special ed cost, that there's no way the budget can absorb, we will charge it to the circuit breaker account. So it's, it's always nice to carry over something in that account. So I don't know if there's any questions on the grant report?
No questions, but I am noting that we may need to move to a second page at some point, given all the grants that Annie is bringing in. I, I remember when this was just a few line items, so great job, team.
Thank you.
I'm going to stubbornly keep it to one page, so I think the font size can just get reduced.
Terrific. I do have a question, though, on a serious note, about S R one, two and three. You mentioned one can't be carried over, two, much of two might be able to be carried over, and three. And to think about that in the context of some of the infrastructure expenditures that Collier told us about. We, we do, if we, if, if we, as a body, determined that we wanted to use S R three towards the infrastructure improvements to the, the building, as our parents and community told us they wanted us to do, we could use S R two towards that if we made the expenditure in this next year? Because you said that there was just one year for that funding?
S R two, I believe we have until September of '24, so it's all of the next year and part of the year after as well. We had mostly, for S R two, we, we used a lot of it for tech contracted services. And so a lot of that is gone already, but we do, we do still have quite a bit of funds. We have some in a salary line, there's quite a bit, $68,000 left in that. So all it would really take is to just amend the grant, just change the budget that we filed with them. And for S R three, we did budget over $218,000 for HVAC repairs. So that's already in the, in the application that we filed. So, yeah, I'm, I'm assuming at some point in time, we will certainly utilize a lot of those funds for that.
And I'm wondering, we didn't have this conversation with, after the Collier presentation, but I'm wondering, when would be an appropriate time for us to talk about the next steps to use S R funding potentially on such a big infrastructure issue like HVAC? And we talked about HVAC, new roof and parking lot. There's probably, you know, there's lots of different ways that we could solve that challenge, but we talked about one way in particular. So what would we need to do to get moving on evaluating something like that? I can interject, and I think that he mentioned the need for, he's giving you an overview. One of the questions that that presentation, I think, was designed to answer, as you know, there's been a lot of discussion about, should we be looking at an entirely new building? I mean, ultimately, that's up to the school committee, but what he presented to you is that a new building, so Amherst is up to about 100 million for the elementary school. And to fix just about everything was 9.4 million, but then he referred to having an implementation plan. So Chris and I can reach back out to Collier's and say, now walk us through our next step. So the school committee, and then in turn, we would bring, this information we'll share with the capital, the town's capital commu, committee and the town administrator. The town's capital committee needs this information, they should kind of be on notice that these are the kinds of repairs that the school department will be looking at over the next decade, so they can include that in their capital planning. When we get feedback on how to move into that implementation planning phase, what that entails, we can bring that back to you folks next month and, and go from there.
Great.
But I would be turning to him, to, I would go back to Collier's and say, now walk us through the implementation phase. Excellent. Just wanted to make sure that we were on track to doing that and knowing that some of these funds were on a timer, if you will. So thank you for pursuing that. Look forward to seeing what they come back with.
Yeah, Humira, I'm glad to say, say, thanks for, yeah, thanks for that line of questioning. I was wondering that myself. And, and I appreciate those brainstorming ideas you all had earlier about the geothermal and solar, those are, so it sounded like Collier wasn't necessarily, or maybe might not be the right team for that, or could be for some of it, but so they, Annie can point us to the other teams?
Yeah, it sounds like they do a lot of, the other reason we reached out to Collier's, because, I mean, can't really say that MSBA likes certain firms, but if they were to like certain firms, I'm sure they would like Collier's. So they, they assist a lot of school districts in terms of their MSBA applications, they're, they're, they're a reputable firm. What I heard Chip talking about is that they may not be the person doing the work, but they certainly could be an owner's project manager or the owner's rep on something. And it sounded like they were willing to do that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Great.
Thanks.
Terrific. And thank you, and sorry, didn't mean to put that all in the grant, it was, felt like the right time to bring that up, thank you.
Sure, no problem. Any other questions on the grants?
I don't think so.
Okay, I'll just jump to the revolving accounts report. So, you know, some of the, the accounts really didn't have a heck of a lot of change from the last month. Certainly, the athletic preschool and student activities didn't have much in terms of change. The, the lunch account had a nice uptick. Basically, we had two months' worth of revenues posted in March, so that kind of brought it up a little bit. And of course, as you had heard earlier, the biggest change of all is with the Hadley Kids account, where we started, initially, I had started the year with around $30,000 in the account. And, you know, as Anne had mentioned, I, I was around September or so, I reached out to them and say, hey, when are you going to roll this over? And they said, well, there's a little issue with it. So all I kept doing was taking the June 30th balance, I added the revenues and took out the expenses every month and kept rolling until finally, it was right, right after the last meeting, where I had reached out again and said, jeez, I'd really like you guys to roll this account over. And they said, oh, that account was closed. And, and that was a, like, you know, wait, what? So, you know, I, I, I called and, and she explained how it was on a warrant. And so what I had done here is just taken the report and zeroed out the starting balance, kind of like the account was zeroed out. And you can see how, at this point in time, we're, we're just under $20,000 in the account. So there's certainly no need to worry about running out of money for the rest of the year. We'll still have revenues coming in as well as expenses going out, so, you know, at least we have that cushion, certainly enough to cover us until, until the money is returned in the fall. And the school choice account, you can see, it's, it's right now pretty high, but again, you know, we do plan on using some of those funds at the end of the school year, so that will come back down again.
Great. Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Okay. Great. Moving on to the next item of the agenda, we have school committee reports and discussion. We'll start with you, Ethan, on finance.
Nothing too big to report. Annie and I showed up to the finance committee meeting, which feels like forever ago. And they really didn't have anything to say to us about our, our budget, budget plans for the next year. That was really good. And anything that they asked Annie handled quite quickly. So we're good, good to go.
Great, thank you. And policy, Tara?
So we met today before the regular school committee meeting and we reviewed two different policies. Well, excuse me, we reviewed one policy, revision of the building use, which I think we're going to bring back for our first reading at the next meeting. There were just two little updates on that, so you'll see that with the next packet. There were just two little updates on that, so you'll see that with the next packet that comes through for first reading next month. And then the other thing that was brought to our attention was review of the fuel efficiency policy from the Town Green Committee. And so the town is looking to do a green energy designation and they need the school committee to sign off on the fuel efficient vehicle policy. And so essentially, what that means for us is, at this time, not too much. Anything over eighty-five hundred pounds, which includes our school buses, would not be affected at this time. But essentially, investing in energy efficient vehicles for the town going forward. And so they're looking for our approval agreement to sign off on this policy to which Humira and I didn't have any objections to and in fact, supported it. I don't know, I don't remember if that's something we're gonna bring up at next meeting, Annie? For everybody to review? Yeah, okay. So that, that will be also for next meeting at first reading.
Great, thank you.
That's it.
Great. And CES, Heather.
Yeah, thanks, Humira. So I have not been able to attend a CES meeting since our last call. It's actually this Wednesday. But I did want to just mention from the latest executive director report that, you know, one of the big items they're doing is this strategic planning and the strategic planning committee that they've been convening across all of the, the different districts and that are they did report in this latest summary, which was from just a few weeks ago, that they've made significant progress since their last update. They've gathered their own departmental input, presentations of department specific strengths, weaknesses, obstacles and threats, exercises, the SWOT analyses, and they're reflecting on those, including incorporating collaborative wide input into that organization's SWOT, which they're going to essentially put out a final collaborative SWOT analysis, because I think that was the, one of the largest things they were trying to get from this is we hear about a lot of the services that they do extremely well, but we also know that there are potential areas of improvement or areas that they invested in that aren't being utilized as widely and maybe deeply as they would have hoped. So those are just examples. And so they're going to be releasing that draft, the SWOT analysis across the entire organization shortly. They've also mentioned that draft statements in their areas around their mission, values, vision statement and goals and objectives have been internally discussed and they're getting ready to put those out for review as well. So you can tell that there's a lot of structural, just I don't want to say reorganization, but more kind of reflection inward in order to come out with, you know, affirmation around what may have shifted in terms of their mission, vision, goals, et cetera.
Terrific. Thank you. I look forward to keeping an eye out for that. I know there was a CES meeting that you weren't able to make and think I pinch hit it for you on that evening and was able to listen in on some important discussions, which I was very keen to understand. So yeah, it sounds like the new executive director is really taking a fresh perspective and fresh look at, and this self critical view is really a good place to start to see where they can improve. So that should be very interesting. Thank you.
Sure, thank you. And thanks for pinching. I appreciate it.
No problem. All right, negotiations and Tara.
Those are actually wrapped up. I'm sorry, I need to remember that we did it for so long. So tonight, after you do the final review of the contracts in executive session, we'll come out and and vote them, but negotiations are wrapped up. I will let you folks know where we stand with transportation. And I don't recall if you assigned anyone to that. Humira, was that you maybe? Let me find out. Drivers? Or did we not?
I think we had a volunteer. I have to go back into my notes and see.
We'll, uh, sue about it, but going forward, these will, this should come off.
Yeah, great. Thank you. Fieldton Capital, Paul.
Yeah, thanks, Humira. Chris and I have been exchanging emails. Chris, have we heard from Berkshire Design lately?
I did reach out, I don't know, two or three weeks ago, asking him for a timeline for his portion of the project. And he responded last week that they were going to finish up the survey work last week, and then they were going to submit it to the Conservation Commission. And then he would be sending us a timeline for the project or for, for his portion of the project. And that's really where we stand. I haven't heard from him at this point in time. I would expect probably another week and then we'll get something from him. But I did mention that we need it. We need his work done around the summertime, just because we'll have to get it moving forward in terms of bringing things to the town for funds. So I guess we'll see what his timeline has, but at least he's aware of it.
Thanks, Chris. That's great. So just a reminder, this is Carlos at Berkshire Design coming up with the sort of the next iteration, more of a detailed specs of what it would look like for Phase Two.
Great, thank you. Keep us posted.
Yeah.
All right. And item seven, announcements. So I'd like to first announce that this is the final school committee meeting for Heather Klush. Heather, thank you for your service. I cannot believe you are no longer going to be on the board. I've really enjoyed working with you and I'm going to miss you a lot. And I'd love to, my, my, I'd love to invite my colleagues to, to share the same.
I'll jump in. Oh, go ahead.
All right, it's just, you know, it's also a marker of where our children are, right? Our children, you know, oldest in college. And yeah, Heather, it's, you've always been so amazingly professional and thoughtful. So it's a big loss. So has it been six years or nine years?
Eight years at least. Nine, nine, this is my ninth year, yeah.
I thought so, yeah, three terms. Yep. So Hadley, Hadley owes you a debt. You've done a great job and you've always just been really consistent and very thoughtful and you've you've really helped us out a lot. So and I've learned a lot watching you. So I appreciate that. Thanks for your service, yeah.
I want to pipe into you. From the moment I joined, you've been the leader until, until this year, when Humira took over and you were a fabulous leader to have in place. And I agree with all the words I already said, kind and considerate and empathetic and compassionate towards the school. Students and staff alike, level headed and, you know, really open and willing to hear and make sure that you're educated before making any statements or opinions or whatnot. And I just, I value that in somebody who's on a school committee or any type of board really, and just as a person. So I I'm definitely going to miss seeing you at school committee meetings. I, I think you were a huge asset to the team. So good luck, though, and you've earned it and we'll miss you.
Thank you, Tara.
I will just say thank you. You were the leader of my first year, which happened to coincide with the global pandemic. So I'm, I'm happy to have had your guidance and leadership because that was a lot, even though we didn't get to meet in person for a year, but whatever, that's okay. We get past that. But no, many thanks and wish you all the best.
Thanks, Ethan.
Thank you, friend. You are a big part of the reason that I'm here. I thought it's, I've been here eight years, so you were on the group that hired me. So the folks who hired me, you and Humira are remaining. And I'm extremely happy to be in Hadley and very grateful that you were part of the team that selected me. So just so grateful, so glad we worked together. And not just your leadership, Heather, the entire committee. I've told you folks before, I'm frequently the envy of my colleagues because of some of the adjectives that others have used, and it extends not just to you, Heather, but to all of you for being kind people who are level headed, who put students first and put your personal egos aside all the time. It just makes this job fantastic. So thank you and thanks for hiring me. I really appreciate it.
I'm so glad we did hire you, Annie.
Heather, any words?
Before you? Yeah, I would just like to thank you all. You know, I didn't know what I was getting into when I started this journey nine years ago. I had a great support system at the time, helping me to, to better understand what I would be entering into. And I am so grateful that I did. I, you know, the past nine years have been just, I've learned so much from all of you, from your predecessors and just from the relationships that we've built out of, out of the work that we've done. I've found, working with you all, you are all so professional and dedicated. And I just, you know, have asked for a better group of colleagues and teammates and friends to work through this together. And, you know, I've told folks, you know, our goal is not to agree on everything. That's why we have, you know, diverse representation around the table and differing backgrounds and experiences that each one of us bring to this role. And so I'm so thankful that all of you are willing to share that in this very public forum about you know, what you bring to the table, because that's, that's why you're here and keep doing it. You know, ask the tough questions. Learn the information, you know, before making the snap judgment or, or decision and just listen to one another because that has been present in the past and I know it will keep moving. I'm sure I'll drop by maybe in a virtual format, you know, you'll see me pop up in the waiting room and oh, Heather Klush is here. Well, I don't need to be co-host, but I, I'm, I'm going to drop in. I'm very interested in the schools. It is a little different, as Paul said, it's a it's where our kids are, you know, and so not having somebody, a son in the schools anymore makes me a little less attached to some of the day to day. But man, our teachers, our educators are just so dedicated and I've been so thankful for what they have offered my son and my family. And I know that they'll keep doing that. So thank you.
Well, thank you. And thank you for your leadership. And we know where you live. And you're still a Hadley resident and we will be tapping you from time to time for, for things. So you might not be on this body, but you have an incredible amount of knowledge and goodwill in the community and we will be tapping you for different kinds of leadership opportunities.
And this is, I believe, although it's your last school committee meeting, you are still a member of the school committee for town meeting. Remember, town meeting is coming up a week from Thursday.
Yes, I won't be here is the problem because my son, who we just spoke of, is leaving Purdue that same day. So I gotta move him out.
Well, I do have one more announcement. And so we have two people running for the seat that Heather is vacating. I announced last meeting that Tony Lynn Morelli is one of the candidates running for that spot. Another candidate is also running, and that is Christine Pipchinsky, also known as Ms. Pip. And both of them will be at Hadley Mothers Club's sponsored Candidates Night on May ninth. And you can go to the live event or it will, and this live event is online, I believe. The live event online as well as it's broadcasted on TV five. You can submit questions in advance to hmothersclub@gmail.com. You must have your name and address listed in the email in order to present questions. They have to be submitted by May sixth. And let's see, that is May ninth at seven PM on Hadley Media, if you choose to get it at, at the time that it's broadcasted. The election itself will be on May seventeenth at Hadley Senior Center between nine AM and eight PM. And you can request a write-in ballot, should you choose to, and that has to be in writing to the Hadley Town Clerk. And that is it for my announcements. Anyone else? Okay. So we have a few action items left and that includes the approval of the minutes from March twenty eighth. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the March twenty eighth meeting minutes?
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And the approval of the AP warrants for March twenty twenty-two?
Some of them.
Do I hear a second?
Seconded.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then the approval of the warrants for March twenty twenty-two? Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the warrants for March twenty-two.
Okay, and the second?
Seconded.
Okay, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we already approved the calendar. Next meeting date is May twenty-third, five PM for the Policy Subcommittee and five thirty for the regular school committee meeting. We are going into executive session. So I'll go ahead and move to go into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting have, may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body and the chair declares so declares. And to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel and to reconvene in open session. And that, just as a reminder, that is, we are reconvening in open session. And so I need a roll call vote. Fasudin, aye. Bruegger?
Aye.
Klush?
Aye.
Lifer?
Aye.
Percy? Thank you, everyone. We'll be back. Okay, great. We are back. And we have some motions to approve. So let's begin with Annie's contract. So motion to extend Annie's, to, to, to give Annie a six-year contract with the start date of July first, twenty twenty-two to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight. And can I include this in the same motion? To include the COLA that the employees will receive in fiscal year twenty-three, which is three percent. Do I hear a motion?
Some of them.
Seconded.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Three percent annually.
It's three percent in FY twenty-three. I'll bring back to you each year. I'll request it of you each year.
Based on what they get. Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so you just, the COLA is one year, the contract term is for six years. But I, I come back to you annually and, and ask for anything.
Okay, thanks.
Great. So that I believe that motion passed, right? So we, we had a motion, we had a second. Did we say all in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now it's official. Next, we are voting to approve Unit A and D contracts. Do I hear a motion?
Some of them.
Seconded.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And that is it for business today. Thank you, everyone. Thank you again, Heather, for your service and good night.
To everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye. Bye, guys. Thank you.
Bye.